Aloha Mahalo for joining Koko Council's 2020 City and County of Honolulu District 3 Council Member Candidates Forum. I'm Lila Mower, President of the Koko Council and your host. Mahalo to my valued colleagues for their legislative support, especially Rick Tabor, Helen Wagner, Doug Matzoka, and Lourdes Shiber. For most of you, this program will be in a watch and listen only mode. Everyone will be muted except the moderators. Each candidate will unmute him or herself when it is your turn to speak, candidate's turn to speak. The Koko Council is one of Hawaii's oldest advocacy organizations. We engage those who are interested in shaping our future and the well-being of our community. As examples, in early March, more than two weeks before Governor Eke issued the stay-at-home orders, the Koko Council held a press conference. We requested our local governments address the pandemic and reveal their plans for older adults. Lieutenant Governor Josh Green and many other advocates for seniors participated in that conference. In April, with worldwide news at residents of nursing homes and long-term care facilities among the most susceptible to COVID-19, the Koko Council held a public conference with Hawaii's Long-Term Care Ombudsman, John McDermott. Ombudsmen from the neighbor islands also joined in and all voiced their concerns about the vulnerability of local care home residents and their caregivers. In May, the Koko Council held the first public Honolulu mayor forum via Zoom. Despite technical glitches, there were nearly 2,000 views of these mayor candidates via Facebook and YouTube. And last week, we held a public forum for all of District 1's candidates, and that video was viewed over 1,000 times on Koko Council's Facebook page and on YouTube. Today, we'll learn about the candidates for District 3's Councilmember seat. All candidates who reported as having filed their candidacy as of June 12 invited to participate. The order in which the candidates will speak was determined by their own application and filing dates. There will be audible warnings to let the speaker know that it's time to wrap up. In the first round, the warnings will come in 30 seconds and then at 15 seconds before the allotted time expires. With all other rounds, there will be only a 15-second warning. Then, although we do not want to be rude, but to be fair to all, when the allotted time expires, the candidate will be muted and the next candidate will be unmuted. So let's begin this forum with the first rotation. We will hear from each candidate. In three minutes, please tell us who you are and why you think you should represent District 3 at the city council. Greg Kalani Kalima, also known as Kalani Kalima, will you please start?
Aloha mai kako. I'm Kalani Kalima, native son of Waimeanalo and running for District 3 for city council. Decided to run because my community advocacy that took me through so many different experiences and issues that my community was facing brought me to this level. We're tired of having to have to react to different projects, whether that was parks that we believed shouldn't have been built, whether that was houses or rewidening of the highway, putting in unnecessary stoplights. So each issue that my community brought forth to us, we went, we advocated, and we went to those that had authority to make the decision. I believe I have a record of saving natural resources found in my community. The founder of Na'kua'aina Waimeanalo passionately pursue poachers in our waters. Worked with HPD, Don Caire, and NOAA to educate our community on their rights and duties when monitoring our shoreline. We also worked with Kua'aina Ulua Wamo, whose motto is "A Movement for Land, People, Culture, and Justice", to bring Uncle Walter Riddy and Malia Kotagawa to share what they've done to protect Molokai's fisheries, to establish local eko, and strengthen sustainability for their community. Na'kua'aina Waimeanalo helped to prevent the sale of 81 acres in Ka'ivi Ma'aka that was to become AD luxury cabins. Joined Laura Ka'aku'a Trust for Public Lands, Elizabeth Riley of Livable Hawaii Kaihui, and a group called Save Ka'ivi Coast Coalition, we utilized a lesson learned from the Save Sandy Beach Coalition ventured on to save our Mauna, because Ka'ivi was our Mauna for Waimeanalo. After seeing Representative Jean Ward waving sign that read "Save Ka'ivi", I decided to turn my car around and find out what his sign meant. We had two months to raise $500,000. When asked to come and grab a sign, I responded with "Give me any contact information, and I think I can do better than holding a sign." And that is how we got involved. After pitching the issue to the members of Na'kua'aina Waimeanalo, they excitedly said, "Let's make a fundraiser." We made a fundraiser that brought together three odd fellows: Ka'ilua, Waimeanalo, and Hawaii Kai. I raised over $21,000 in one night. A phone pledge took our efforts from preservation to stewardship with $100,000 being pledged that night. So I believe that the results that I have made by listening to the community and the issues that they have makes me a viable contender for city council.
Thank you, Kalani. Alan, you're next.
Aloha mai kako. Alan Kikotek, Sheriff, Honolulu City Council Candidate for District 3, Ka'ilua, Kanyohi, parts of Kahalu and Waimeanalo. I wanted to thank everyone for this opportunity. I'm born and raised on the Windward side. I have a large extended family with deep roots throughout the Windward community. I'm a graduate of Ka'ilua High School. My mom's side of the family all attended Ka'ilua High. My dad's side of the family all attended Castle. I have a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science from the University of Hoi'at Manoa. And throughout the last 12 years, I have lived and breathed my role as a public servant, fully devoted to building strong relationships within our community to enact policy that benefits our residents first. I first served for 10 years at the Hoi'at State Senate under the Senate Majority Leader Jake Kalani English, and then I was fortunate to be able to work for my own community under Ikaka Anderson, the current incumbent District Council member. My priority has been to support our residents with information on government programs and policies, as well as the significance of participation in the legislative process and addressing other general concerns. As local residents, we have a right to get involved, and my job is to make sure the community's voice is heard. I'm running for office to help my community. Being born and raised in the Windward side, my position working for the council provides me a unique perspective and understanding of the people, the problems, and the processes to fix them. In my capacity as Deputy Chief of Staff for the incumbent District Council member, I've been able to bring tremendous departmental and charitable services to our district, as well as prioritize CIP funding requested from the community. This unique synergy with the community, government, and private sector allows me to accomplish these types of collaborative efforts, and I hope to continue doing so as your council member for the council District 3. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Alan. Esther, you're next.
Aloha mai kako. Thank you to the Koko Council for organizing this important forum. My name is Esther Kia'aaina, and I live in the heart of Ka'ilua Town. I am running for the city council because I care deeply about the future direction of Oahu, and I believe that my cumulative work experience and determination will make a meaningful impact for our communities. I have over 25-plus years of policy experience, both at the federal and state levels, which I believe will serve me well at the city council. I worked for President Obama at the Department of the Interior, Senator Akakal, Congressman Robert Underwood, and Congressman Ed Case as his Chief of Staff at the time when he was representing the second district. I also have worked at the state level as First Deputy for DLNR, Chief Advocate at OHA, Land Asset Manager at the Kamamia Schools, which included overseeing conservation and agricultural lands on the Windward region, Leeward, and the island of Molokai. I currently serve as the Executive Director for the Civic Basin Development Council, and I advance social and economic development in the region. On the big-picture side of the issues that I would like to deal with, clearly, public health and safety is paramount just to help in the reopening of overall society, as well as preparing for the resumption of, hopefully, what we would have a measured level of tourism. And with regard to some of the issues facing our region, I believe that affordable housing and homelessness are hand-in-hand, because many of our homelessness beneficiaries are actually working families who simply can't afford a place to live. So I believe they have to be dealt in tandem. Of course, illegal vacation, short-term rentals, and monster homes, a big problem, not just for the region, but for Oahu. I believe in stricter enforcement and closing the loopholes for those who would like to skirt the law. I look forward to a productive discussion today. Mahalo.
Thank you, Alan.
Aloha, everybody. My name is Paul Mossman. I'm running for city council in District 3. You know, I've been a contractor. I've been a union worker, Teamster Union, carpenters' union. I'm a web designer. I've lived in the Windward side for about 36 years. As long as I've been married, I have five grown children, four active-duty, one is a businesswoman. And when I look at the Windward side, I see a community that needs greater representation. Now, let me explain. You know, I put an idea forward that is Windward side first, and it doesn't mean to disrespect the rest of Oahu, but it means we need to look at the Windward side and its assets and its capabilities and its people by itself to a degree, and how are we going to help the Windward side develop in a way that brings greater prosperity and a greater peace of mind and a greater way of life? And if we do that on the Windward side, well, that helps everybody across the whole island. So we came through one of the greatest drops in economic activity in the past three months, and what we're looking for now is two things to make things better. One is representation, which we're a little hard-pressed to find because we keep getting a lot of bum-bye representation, and we look to the free enterprise system. Now, let me explain. When you have proper representation, then you get people involved and collaborating. You find the roadmap to move forward on different issues, like how do you do planning in Ka'ilua instead of regulating? We plan things. If we don't make plans, then we do regulations, and then everything is just meeting the regulation and not really an overarching plan of where you're going. And then, when we've got our plans down and we are collaborating, we have proper representation, then we can turn to the free enterprise system, just like we're doing now, to produce a vaccine for COVID, to produce a way to test people for COVID, to get our economy moving again. So my plan, my hope as a representative on this city council is to represent the interests of the Windward side, and in turn, look to how are we going to best, if we do good things on the Windward side, that's going to work out for every place else on Oahu, and we're going to be developing new ideas and new ways. We don't have to be stuck with the way everything's been done in the past. We can develop new options and new directions. So that's what I'm running for. That's why it's a little out there as far as the standard candidate, because it's not so much what I've done, it's what I can do for you, right? The people don't have this resume about what a candidate should be. They're going, "What do you want to do for us? What is your plan for the Windward side? What is your plan moving forward if we can expand this idea to the rest of Oahu, to the rest of the state, so that we become a state the best way to protect against whatever happens in the future is to have a clean state, a safe state, a state where business activity is going on and people are prospering, and we're living to the best and highest quality we can?" And that's pretty much what I want to say at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul. Worland, you're next.
Aloha. My name is Worland Kialoha. I'm also running for the District 3 position for city council. I came to this decision basically seeing what had occurred over the past few years. I believe the city council position is the important connection between what gets done policy-wise and the political arena that we currently endure. My family is a lifelong resident of the Windward side. What we come to know now is Waimeanalo Beach Park was actually my family's homestead that was taken in eminent domain back in 1966. So my family roots go way back into the community as well. In terms of qualifications, I think the decision for the voters, me additionally being a voter, looking at records of other people running for mayor and other positions, is do we want to go with someone who has a comprehensive view and knowledge to serve in the city council position? That unfortunately requires knowledge in areas from economic development. Now, we have policy issues that involve pandemics, you know, decisions regarding the rail in terms of where we're going to go in that direction, and all of these things affect the Windward district. So as goes the city, right? The ramifications for our area and our communities follow as well. So in this sense, I believe my qualifications, my knowledge, my research and academic background, as well as serving in every possible sector, from being a small business person, working for the Department of Transportation in the airports division, and working in the private sector and in management, will serve me very well, and the correct decisions are going to be made going forward if I'm able to get elected to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Worland. Greg, you're next.
Good afternoon, Lila, and members of the Koko Council. Thank you for hosting this candidate forum. My name is Greg Thielen. For me, this election is about integrity, trust, and leadership, and bringing those qualities back to city government. I believe I am the candidate best qualified to do that, because these are qualities I have embraced in every aspect of my life. I am dedicated to my family. My daughter Anna is 14, my son Patrick is 10, and my wife Laura and I will be celebrating my 20th wedding anniversary next month. I was born and raised on the Windward side, and I'm thrilled I've been able to allow my children to experience this privilege as well. I worry, though, that my children and many others that grew up here will be priced out of experiencing the same. I am a small business owner. I started Complete Construction Services 19 years ago. When I started, I had nothing but my tools and my truck. I did my own carpentry work by day and came home at night to do estimating and bookkeeping at my desk in my living room. With time, effort, and determination, I developed my company into an award-winning custom home building and remodeling business that is one of the most well-regarded on the island of Oahu. I am committed to my community. I have been a sponsor and volunteer for the Family Promise Fund Run since it started in 2012. I have been a youth sports coach for both soccer and T-ball. I have been involved in community build projects, such as the community playground at Akaki Elementary School. I'm a volunteer advocate for small business and housing issues. My first significant role in this regard was being appointed to the Small Business Regulatory Relief Task Force by Governor Ka'itano in 1996. Over the last 24 years since then, I have continued this advocacy at every level of government, but especially with the city. My dad used to tell me, "Take care of your reputation. It will follow you wherever you go." I've always heeded that advice, and in all areas of my life, have tried my best to conduct myself, demonstrating the qualities of integrity, leadership, and trust, qualities I want to bring to the city council representing the Windward community. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. This rotation is the first in a series of rotations. Each candidate, starting with Alan Tekshera, has one minute to answer questions posed by Gary Simon.
Thank you, Lila, and thank you, candidates. I'm Gary Simon. I am the State President for ARP Hawaii, and I'm also President of the Hawaii Family Caregiver Coalition. And my question is, in three years, by the end of 2023, which kupuna policies and programs will you have improved in the city and county of Honolulu? And how will you have improved those kupuna policies and programs? Please, Alan Tekshera?
Aloha. Thank you so much for the question. One of the first things I think we should expand or maintain is the real property tax exemption for kupuna each 65 years or above. We can also look at revisiting the low-income portion to see if we can increase or lower the threshold to help those kupuna in need. We could also, over the years, I've been working with the Citizens for a Fair Americans with Disability Act, Free Citizens for a Fair Americans with Disability Act ride to improve paratransit services. We introduced a resolution for them this year, Resolution 20-70, to implement a lot of the recommendations that Audit produced on paratransit from the 2016 year. Unfortunately, due to COVID, the hearing for this particular resolution got pushed back, but we are still working with CAFTA to improve handy van services across the board. Another component we can look at is just increasing or expanding outreach services for kupuna in need. We do a lot of outreach services. We have the Kanyohi Senior Center. We have programs like that that we can expand and provide resources and recreation for our kupuna. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Esther, you're next.
Aloha. Thank you so much for that question. I'll be honest with you. Given the budgetary crisis that we're having all the way around at all levels of government, I'm actually deeply concerned about all services for elderly. So I think first and foremost, I would ensure that that the funding for the Elderly Affairs Division, both from the county as well as state funding or from the federal government, is not short shrifted in the hundreds of millions of dollars flowing down to the state and federal governments, because everybody is competing for funds. I would prioritize to make sure that programs for meals to our seniors, as well as housing, continues. But in particular, I'll be honest with you, we talk about homelessness, and and as you know, there's various sub-populations, but we don't talk about our seniors who are homeless. And so I think if there was an area apart from continuing services for the multitude of programs that we have, I would probably prioritize homelessness and what special outreach is being undertaken by program administrators to make sure that they are not dealt with in the same fashion as all of the population. Thank you so much for the question.
Thank you, Esther. Paul, you're next.
Thank you. That's a good question. The best thing to do for senior citizens, like I'm getting up there, but as everybody stay healthy, everybody stay in good strength, is to lower the cost of living for everybody. That's something which is not a priority in this state. You know, back in 2016, when I was on the neighborhood board, the whole thing about Next Era Purchasing Hawaiian Electric came through, and there was a lot of stir. There was a lot of talk about what to do, but in the end, Next Era was rejected by a three-man P Public Utilities Commission. Now, not only after talking with Hawaiian Electric field workers, the regular linemen, did they say that they wanted, well, at least one of my friends said he wanted to see that go through, because they were a higher level of expertise that they could bring to this state. Also, they were going to lower the cost of electricity by $111 million a year by converting the power plant to natural gas. That's 30% of our electric bill. That's 30% of a senior's electric bill, their food costs, their transportation costs, the entire cost of living. We need to focus on lowering the cost of living, where most of the time, we seem to be focused on getting the cost of living higher instead of lower. So yes, I want to help senior citizens. I want to help everybody by working to lower the cost of living.
Thank you. Worland, you're next, please.
I thank you for the question as well. In terms of our kupuna, three years from now, they're probably going to endure some special hardships, given the economic fallout that we're about to experience. So in terms of solutions, definitely the funding has to be preserved for this cohort of the population. And everything that affects them currently, if not addressed, is going to get worse. Cost of living, we've had that problem, obviously, for years, and it continues. And in terms of services, paratransit was mentioned. That's been a particular problem. I have friends who ride that and wait forever for the service to show up. That has to be addressed and taken care of. And I think finally, right in terms of housing, I would want to prioritize senior citizen affordable housing, not just affordable housing in general, because these are the most vulnerable people on the street. Obviously, you know, single-parent families, they have the issue as well, but definitely for seniors. Thank you.
Thank you, Worland. Greg, you're next.
Thank you for the question. There is no bigger issue facing our kupuna than housing. I can't emphasize this enough, is that we need our city to take a whole new look at how it approaches housing and really stop being an impediment to the construction of housing. I'll share an experience a fellow home builder had when they were going through their permitting process to try and get a permit for elderly affordable rental housing. It took over a year to get a building permit, which is inexcusable. But what's worse is they went back for a second building permit, for a second building, the exact same plan on a neighboring lot, and it still took more than a year for the second permit. We've got to demand better from our city than that. That's completely inexcusable. That's time that people would not have access to that housing, and we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Kalani, you're next.
Aloha. We have to focus on food, service, and housing. Those are my three main focuses for our kupuna. Also, in Waimeanalo, we create our program to feed the kupuna and keke of our community. Our meals with aloha not only nourishes the body, but also the spirit by providing those that we serve with much-needed social interaction in a safe way. Kupuna need more than social distancing. They need to keep their mental health going, and that is what we provide. After becoming a beacon of people's aloha, we have been continually blessed by the generosity of Abilitat Nuhu, Omakapili, just to name a few, that had come in and seen that there was a need to provide for our kupuna. And we need to make sure that the housing, rent, and leases is controlled for the kupuna at Pula Nakualali in Waimeanalo. Because we have a private-public partnership going on over there, the rent has been increasing, forcing kupuna to have to stand out on the road and sign-waive to raise awareness for them. We cannot allow this to happen. They are our most vulnerable and most important parts. They are the connection to our paths. They don't deserve this type of treatment, and I would make sure to malama them.
Thank you, Kalani. All right. This next rotation gives each candidate, starting with Esther Kia'aaina. One minute to answer. Doug Matzoka.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for participating. I'm with Hawaii Meals on Wheels and also Hawaii Gorilla Video Hui. My question comes in part My question comes in part from my own experience with homelessness in 2014. And my question is this. Given that 7,000 people became homeless on Oahu last year, what can you do to prevent people from becoming homeless?
Esther, you're up. Esther, hello?
Yeah, sorry about that. Can you hear me? Thank you so much, Doug. A very difficult issue. It is unacceptable with regard to the increase of numbers. Of course, the big picture is affordable housing that has been made, that has been mentioned by some of my previous colleagues with regard to what is driving up the cost of housing and many of our families who are homeless. So what I would do, big-picture-wise, a living wage, of course, is important. Trying to increase the number of affordable housing units, specifically to homelessness. We need to address the complexities within our populations, of course. Again, there are veterans. There are those who are suffering from mental illness and drug addiction. And there are working families who were unable to afford homes. So clearly, we need to increase short-term housing for them. And we need to look at more permanent housing. But I believe the permanent housing should be in tandem with our overall efforts to try to increase the amount of affordable housing units. Very difficult for many developers. So I believe that we should subsidize some of these units by paying for the cost of public infrastructure, perhaps, to mitigate the cost for them moving forward on affordable housing units. So that would be one of my proposals. Thank you so much for the question.
Thank you, Esther. Paul, you're next.
Unmuted. Hi. Good question. And obviously, a key people for being homeless is to get the homeless off the street at the same time. I mean, it's going to be linked together. Now, if you want less of something, you regulate it. If you want things to stay the same, you don't do anything. And if you want more of something, as Esther mentioned, you subsidize it. My idea for the first, next, you know, one to 20 years would be to bring in trailers. And let's face it, a prefabricated modular home, the single-wide trailer, is an actual home. It's got kitchens, it's got a bathroom, it's got a bedroom. It's regular living. It's not a tiny house. It's not a yurt. It's not a tent on the beach. It's a home. And it's not that we have a lack of land. We have huge amounts of land, most of it sitting idle. We've got Barber's Point. There is lots of land in Waimea Manalo. There's lots of extra land in Kailua and Kanioei. I know people don't like to hear the idea of trailer parks because, oh, trailer parks are ugly. But we bring trailers in for businesses. You can go up to the state, up the road here, Kailua Road, and the state is in trailers. We could bring in trailer parks, trailers. We could build trailer parks. We could get people off the beach and off the side of the road. Down the road from 20 years from now, you don't want trailer parks anymore. They're easy to pull out because in Florida, the people living in trailer parks are fighting against being converted to condominiums. So that's an immediate plan that we could start right away to get this settled, at least in the next six months, if we got smart.
Thank you very much. Worland, you're next.
On the issue, what I'm fearful of is the amount of people that could possibly lose homes in the next two years based on their inability to catch up to rent due to their landlords. I think the problem is going to get significantly worse if we don't do something. One of the things I had heard before, I can't claim ownership to the idea, was being able to use empty city property and rehab them and convert them to living quarters in the short term. I don't see what the NIMBY problem would be or, you know, any sort of protest about that. And that would seem to be one of the quickest things, bypassing at least some of the red tape with the Department of Permitting and Planning. And in terms of, I would just like to take the, you know, a salute to Meals on Wheels. I think you people do a fantastic job. And for some of you, you're the only connection some seniors have to the outside world. Thank you.
Thank you, Worland. Greg, you're next.
Thank you for the question and thank you for your service with Meals on Wheels. I've been proud to support you guys in the past. You do wonderful work. I hate to sound like a broken record, but this comes back to housing. The fact of the matter is homelessness is caused by a wide range of different symptoms. But the one thing they all have in common is a lack of access to affordable and safe housing. There are certain things that we can be doing. We have to build our way out of that problem. But there's also things we can be doing in the meantime that the city is doing, namely the landlord engagement process. This is a process where the homeless providers are working with landlords to get them to dedicate units to people that use rapid rehousing vouchers and those types of things. So doing something along those lines will definitely help. But until we build more units, we are not going to solve this problem.
Thank you very much, Greg. Kalani, you're next.
Aloha. We have a top-down approach to dealing with the homeless. We need a better approach and work with programs to provide social and mental health services within a kualaleo village system with treatment. Utilizing theaina-centric approach allows them to build their self-image, confidence, skills to work theaina and be a part of the community within the community. Focus on well-being of the whole and not just a place to stay. Consistency is integral. Need to build a stronger community by focusing on educating our kids to acquire the skill to get better jobs so that they can afford houses. Waimea Manalo is working on having a kualaleo village model. Uncle Joe Tassel and his kualaleo motto has us working with our Native Hawaiian, Native American brothers and sisters on the continent to provide lumber and utilizing our brothers and sisters fresh from Pa'aha to build these homes for the houseless Kanaka. Aloha.
Thank you very much, Kalani. Alan, you're next.
Aloha. To prevent homelessness, I think we should do two things. First of all, we would need to expand the social safety net by providing these type of support services, paid family leave, expanded health benefits. I don't think a lot of the residents would be in such dire straits concerning COVID. We also should look at creating something like an economic assistance fund. We have a rainy day fund that the government can tap into should something happen. I think we should have an economic assistance fund in the budget that residents can utilize at need should some type of disaster occur again. We also utilize some of the CARESAC money at the city to create a hardship relief fund. So if you cannot pay your bills, it's based entirely on financial need, and you can go in and try to get money from the city in CARESAC money. I think we need to continue those type of projects. The other thing we need to do is provide affordable housing. There's many ways to do this. It came up, everybody else mentioned it. But basically, we can do this in two ways. We can increase density in certain areas. Like if we increase density within the partnering zones, A1, A2, A3, and AMX zones, this would alleviate some of the challenges in building apartments. We could also eliminate parking requirements in the urban core, which would assist in bringing down costs for affordable housing projects and make housing more affordable. We also need to streamline and modernize the Department of Planning and Permitting. This is where a lot of the issues we come in. If we streamline the process, given that 30% of a new residential unit is attributed to compliance, extractions, regulations, and codes, this would lower project across the board for all types of housing projects. Was that the beep? Am I running out of time? So basically, affordable housing, streamlining DPP, and providing affordable housing. Aloha.
Thank you, Alan. All right, this rotation gives each candidate, starting with Paul Mossman. One minute to answer Dale Head's question.
Hello there, aloha. Thank you, Dale Head. I'm a retired blue-collar worker from Pearl Harbor Shipyard and talking to you from Waimea. Simple question. What are your thoughts about a proposed affordable housing complex in Kailua on the corner of One Ava and Kawaienui Streets? Thank you.
Well, there's a hot-button question. Like everybody says, affordable housing is important. Although, if you want affordable housing, you have to build up to and slightly in excess of demand. So you can't, again, you can't demand or regulate affordable housing. You have to build your way through whatever means, through stick building, through prefabricated modular housing. But you have to build your way up to demand or in excess of. That causes the cost of housing to stabilize. And then, you know, it becomes affordable. Obviously, my thing is planning. I want to see a plan for Kailua. That's why I want to see Kailua actually become a separate city, an incorporated municipality, where it could have its own city council and its own mayor, and then it could plan itself out. Where do you put affordable housing or new housing? How about Hamakua Drive, which is a large, much larger boulevard and has a kind of access to both Kailua Town and getting in and out of here? How about Mokapu Boulevard, which also has lots of access? You see, that project is a regulation project. It meets the 50 pages of regulations to be an affordable housing project, regardless of whether it makes sense or not to either the community or to Kailua's long-term future. So this is where, looking at the overall picture of how we do things, of how we're structured, of what we can and can't do, not based again on what we've been given from the past, but what is fairly common throughout most of the country. When I talk about something as radical as Kailua Town, there's 10,000 incorporated municipalities in this country. But in Hawaii, there's zero because of the city and county structure. So we're expected to represent, all of us, as the sole representative of District 3, 115,000 people. You know, we need more representation, not working at less and trying to do everything ourselves.
Thank you, Paul. Worland, you're next.
I've been following the situation with the affordable housing development in Kailua. I'm a devotee of a person named Jane Jacobs. And she writes about urban ecology. And watching, you know, reading the minutes from the Kailua Neighborhood Board meeting. And obviously, this was a top-down structured project instead of coming from the bottom up. I would oppose the project. I think the project is too large. I think it's oversized, and it doesn't fit within the community. And that seems to be a lot of the major objections. That would be my stance. You have to bring the scope down. You have to look for other smaller plots that could be developed and then maybe incentivize the developer by giving him other plots that he could continue building on. And this is after, you know, a lot of graduate work, studying, planning, and development. That would be my position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Greg, you're next.
I would say thank you for the question, but I wouldn't really mean it because this one is pretty controversial. The project question, I guess what my take on it at this point is is that I'm disappointed that it's being discussed in a yes-or-no manner. Either you're for it or you're against it. I believe that we should be taking this opportunity to look at ways that it makes sense to develop a project there. While I don't support this project in its current form, I believe that there's ways to address the community's concern and get some much-needed affordable housing in Kailua. We can't simply have a developer show up and say, this is what I'm going to build, take it or leave it. We need to have some dialogue and interaction in that process. And if I were on the council currently, that is what I would be trying to do at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Greg. Kalani, you're up.
We need to move towards sustainable communities, one that focus on environmental and economic sustainability, social equity, cultural acceptance and that adequate resources available for future generation. Yeah, we need to support local farmers, engage the public, encourage civil discourse. I am not in favor of this. In fact, I stood on the corner with Tony Pedro and the Protect Kailua Ohanas that live over there. We have three families. I know of three families that live inside that area that's going to be affected. They already got their eviction notice. For those of you that was at the meeting, you heard them speak very passionately that they're going to get evicted for this monstrosity labeled as affordable housing. Now, affordable housing is important, but shouldn't come at the detriment of the community or the quality of life for those that live there. They need to work with the community to feel out what works for them instead of allowing developers to buy properties and then create these huge projects that add very little community input. Aloha.
Alan, you're next.
Aloha. So in, this project in particular has a lot of miscommunications, misconceptions revolving around it. First of all, this is a true 201H affordable project, recognized by both the city and the county. Second of all, this project is not being rushed through, and it will have community involvement. It's currently at the Department of Planning and Permitting, which is the first step. They have to go and get their permit. DPP can make recommendations, and it can then be sent to the city council per 201H requirement. At that point, the community will have ample time to participate in the public process and make any recommendations or testimony they want. It's going to have to go through the full process, committee hearings, full council meetings, and the neighborhood board. Another thing we need to realize is a lot of the issues coming up can all be addressed before the plan even comes to the council. So to really have strong positions on this is a little premature, considering parking, height, all of these issues that are being discussed right now can be changed before it even gets to the public hearing process. So like I said, the public will still have an opportunity to come in. This is very early on in this project's process. Community engagement is forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Esther, you're up.
Thank you. I agree with Worland and Greg with regard to the parameters of the current proposal. In its current form, I testified at the Kailua Neighborhood Board Zoning Committee last Tuesday against the proposal and respectfully asked that the developer pull the proposal and recalibrate her decision in moving forward, taking everyone's concerns into account. But I also said that it is not enough for us to just be against this or any other affordable housing project. Instead of waiting for people to tell us where locations could be, we should have a community-driven process with policymakers and developers to potentially identify both government and private lands suitable for affordable housing. Third, we need to reevaluate the 201H process. I know that it provides for expedited consideration for affordable housing units. Well, all I have to say is it comes down to location, location, location. So if we all know that, why do we put ourselves in a no-win situation where community input is minimal? According to what Alan is proposing, it should be done really at the outset of the process. You need not have a law or regulation requiring it. So I think that we need to reevaluate how to improve the 201H process. So again, against the proposal in its current form, we should have greater community input on identification of locations. And third, we need to reevaluate the 201H process. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. This rotation gives each candidate, starting with Worland Kiaaloha. One minute to answer Barbara Service.
Aloha. I'm Barbara Service.
Aloha, I'm Barbara Service. I'm a member of Kookoa Council Board, AARP Board and other senior organizations. My question is, given what's going on with the rail, what are your thoughts since it isn't in your area, but you're paying for it?
Warland?
Sorry.
Thank, thank you for the question. One of my, one of my personal favorites. The rail, by all measures of everything I've studied and researched is completely out, is, is wrong on so many levels, I, I don't even know where to begin. My, my personal position right at this point would be a stop and a reset and a reevaluation of everything that's gone in in terms of financing, future projections, getting the federal, the federal questions resolved. Apparently, it's, you know, it's a point of finger pointing between the mayoral candidates. But, but at our level in the city council, based on my knowledge of, you know, studying the public projects like the Big Dig in Boston and, and all the way across the United States, this was done completely wrong. It shouldn't have been elevated for the most part. That was a concession to the unions, that, that upped the cost. I don't think ridership will be anywhere near where it, where it could be. And it should be stopped at Middle Street for the time being. And in terms, it needs to be solved and, and addressed in, in terms of what it's going to end up costing our grandchildren. Triple P's, they're talking about 30 years. That's a generation of handing the, the running of the rail off to, to another company. Completely dangerous. Anyway, that's, that's some of my thoughts on it. I could go on and on, but thank you.
Thank you very much, Warland. Greg, you're next.
Thank you very much for the question. First and foremost, I'm deeply disappointed in the council for voting to rescind the forensic audit and suspend the $2 million. To say that it's not worth $2 million to investigate a $9.2 billion project is outrageous. Secondly, I think we need to come to grips with the fact that there is no rewind button on it. We do have the luxury of a pause button though. And what I mean by that is not to pause any of the ongoing construction, which I wouldn't support stopping. But like Warland mentioned, I'm very concerned about this last phase of bids that are due late in July and whether or not that is going to try to be pushed through by this administration before a new administration and a new council has the time to look at it. I believe that the people of the city and county of Honolulu deserve fresh eyes on this project before that moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Kalani, you're next.
Aloha, mahalo nei. When it comes to the rail, all I have to say is fiscal responsibility and accountability. We need that, well, I agree. The audit would have been great to find out what was going on with the funding, what is going on with the skyrocketing cost of rail. But that's what we need to work on it, is trying to get those that voted in favor of stopping that, getting them involved and finding out where the money has gone. Mahalo nei.
Thank you very much. Kalani. Alan, you're next, please.
Aloha. Thank you for the question. In my opinion, rail is a key component of our city's transit-oriented development plan. Once completed, it will connect well those communities, decrease transportation costs for residents and make neighborhoods more walkable. In meetings with the Federal Transit Administration, they have told us that if we do not complete the full project, 21 stations or 20 miles, we will have to return all the money that they already gave us. And we would also jeopardize any future funding for the state of Waukeah on any transportation project. As far as the audit goes, the federal government is already providing an audit. They're doing their own internal audit of rail. So for the city to do an, an additional audit where we would have to follow by what the, the federal government's audit says anyway, would be a complete waste of the $2 million. As far as the elevation component goes, that was included because if you put the train at grade, you're basically making the train susceptible to traffic and you're not really helping anybody by being stuck in traffic. That was why it went up to elevation. I think the, the rail needs to be completed. I think we can work with Brooksfield, Alamoana to get that last station completed and possibly even look at a one-stop trip to University of Waukeah. Mahalo. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alan. Let's see now. Esther, you're next, please.
I think a lot of my colleagues have well covered it. My position, of course, is I support the rail. I understand the need for people from the west side and of a plane to be able to get to work in Honolulu. Over 80% of all our jobs are in Honolulu. I'm deeply concerned, however, of course, like everyone else, not only about the fiscal and accountability and transparency of how those funds are used, but also the completion of it, as both Greg and Warland had expressed, with regard to who is going to help with regard to that last leg. Some of the benefits, apart from all that we have mentioned, that I think dovetails with our need for affordable housing is that, that along that corridor, affordable housing units could, could be a component along the rail for people who are trying to get to work and who need housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Paul, you're next.
The rail project is unfortunate that, you know, we have to be pulled up into that. It's people on the windward side. It has no connection to the windward side. That's why I say put the windward side first. I want to represent the issues and the problems of the windward side. I want urban Honolulu and the leeward communities to prosper and thrive. Don't get me wrong. But part of what's taking place is they talk about Honolulu being one of the largest municipalities in the country because everybody's all jammed together in a city and county. And the city takes advantage of that by entering into a project that the state wouldn't do. So now we're stuck with something that costs $9 billion, at least, will cost $111 million a year to operate. So you need, like, everybody on Oahu to ride that thing and spend $100 million, $100 a year for it to break even. So we've got a mess. We've got to face that fact. We've got to figure out what we can do about it and maybe be able to dovetail it with something that makes sense. Bus rapid transit would have been the way to go. Too late for that. That could have helped computerize our, our, our traffic light systems. There would have been a lot of things. I love what the, the construction guys have done. It's awesome. But there's no crossover to that now. We're not going to build another rail system where if we had done a bus rapid transit, or maybe if we look at this project, we can find ways that it will benefit the windward side and the North Shore and East Oahu and far out on the Waianae Coast that gets stuck every time a dog chases a cat across Farrington Highway and the whole road's blocked. So we have to admit we've got a problem and we have to look at it in a new manner, in a new, fresh way as most people on the windward side agree.
Thank you, Paul. I'm sorry. This rotation gives each candidate, starting with Greg Thielen, one minute to answer Lourdes Schreiber.
Hi, I'm Lourdes Schreiber. I serve on Kookoa Council as a director. And I also serve as a director at my condominium association. As a property owner and a senior on a fixed income, my question is municipalities can go bankrupt. Other than raising property taxes, how will you create new revenues? Thank you.
Thank you very much for the question. I guess first and foremost, I see collecting new revenues as a measure of last resort. We really need to focus more on streamlining our government and bringing it, dragging it, kicking and screaming into the 21st century. We need to make sure that we're spending our dollars wisely and frugally before we look at trying to raise more money. The fact of the matter is, is adding a tax burden onto the people of the city and county of Honolulu at this point in time, of what they're experiencing is something I would be very reluctant to enter into. Now, I do believe there's revenue opportunities in isolated situations where, as our visitor industry starts to come back, where we can potentially look to increase some of the funding that comes from those sources, have situations where we increase fees, at parks and other ways to raise money from our visitors that are visiting us. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Kalani, you're next.
Aloha. I believe that the city spends millions of dollars on projects that are slated for failure because of a lack of community engagement and proper planning. The money spent on study, planning, design, redesign, that ends up going nowhere is what we need to cut. We need to share project ideas with the community and get their buy-in first. $17 million on just the plans of the renovation of Neil Blaisdell Center to have it scrapped is not how we garner public support and trust. We need to prevent these occurrences from happening. The PAT or hotel tax is another source of revenue, but we so since then pandemic, we still have only a shadow of its former self. We need to diversify our economy by focusing on food sustainability, making industries around it, supporting our farmers that provide for the restaurants and businesses that serve the public. We need to utilize the lessons learned from COVID to build a brighter future for our Mo'opuna and Kiki. Mahalo.
Thank you, Kalani. Alan, you're next.
So trying to find new revenue sources for the city are a little difficult for us. We are prohibited by the state for creating new taxes and we cannot charge beyond the cost of whatever service it is we, we provide. If we give you a permit, we can only charge you, I think it's one penny over the cost of what it would cost us to provide. So finding the resident revenue streams is really difficult. We would have to look at things like cost savings that we're utilizing now from COVID-19. The current pandemic gave us an opportunity to reexamine how we operate as a government. A lot of departments are remote working now and we're finding that they can still provide the amount, the same amount of services and productivity goes up. So if we can look at which departments can do this on a long-term basis, that's cost savings to the government where we don't have to pay their physical components of an office, their phone, parking, whatnot. We would have to look at cost savings approaches. We could also look at possibly federal grants for particular projects. Now, that's not reoccurring funding, but if we're offsetting costs by capitalizing on federal grants we can utilize on particular projects that would save the money over, that would save the city money over the long term. Mahalo.
Thank you, Alan. Esther, you're next.
I agree with regard to, starting first with the, the efficient use of funds. I believe there's a, a lot of ways to streamline and to save, save funding. I also believe that the city council should be obliged to, when they move projects forward, to know the cost. So if it is not mandated, we should consider whether or not we need to do that because the federal government can't move a bill forward without a budgetary estimate. Third, with regard to the Federal CARES Act, again, we need to be prudent in how we use the funds. Alan raised a great issue with regard to communications and telecommunicate, telecommuting. I believe we need to upgrade our IC systems. If we had it in place for the state, we wouldn't have the problem with unemployment. Lastly, foreign investors should be considered for an increase in their real property tax. Lastly, along the rail, we are expecting increased revenue from along the rail. So there's a lot of issues, again, goes back first to making sure that the city council holds the line with regard to greater use of our funds.
Thank you, Esther. Paul, you're next.
There is a lot of issues dealing with the structure of the city and county. A county normally collects fees for service. It can do bonding. It can do different things to raise funds. You'd have school districts that would raise funds separately. And your incorporated municipalities, your cities, would do your property tax. So we've got this mix in this government that's been passed on to us since 1905 we have to try and deal with. Now, as far as raising revenue, that means increasing productivity, lowering costs and, and, and creating more business. I would suggest everybody take time to go to, check out National Geographic's video on, on Singapore. Singapore has a, a household income of about $3,000 higher than ours. They have a population of 5 million people on a land area half our size. Now, because of planning and because they are safe, clean and very business-friendly, they, they have a lot of money. They're generating income. You know, we can generate income by taking agriculture seriously. Agriculture, you have to actually address in a serious manner. You know, I lived in California for several years and in the Central Valley to do agriculture to the level it's at, they built dams, they built laterals, they built irrigation systems that completely transformed that, that valley. Now, we could do agriculture on the same level and have a secure food source and have revenue staying in Hawaii and being generated in Hawaii and potentially even be exported to bring revenue in if we took agriculture seriously. Part of doing that is maybe looking at other tropical countries that have successful agricultural programs like Brazil. Brazil's, Brazil went from a net food importer in the past 20 years to become a net food exporter because they have a very well-thought-out agricultural policy. We have a lot of fallow land, a lot of fallow land that needs to be converted back into agriculture. We need to lower the cost of living. We need to have low-cost abundant energy. That is an invitation for creative businesses to come to Hawaii along with an excellent school system and taking care of our environment, our natural environment, having the best parks, the best access.
It's, it's Warland's turn. Warland, please.
Thank you. In terms of increasing revenues, right? The, the, the natural knee-jerk reaction coming from the city would be trying to find some way to raise property taxes. Obviously, that, that can't happen for, for local residents. And, you know, there's been plenty of talk about doing, doing a change towards how we allocate property taxes. You know, some of it incentivizing multi-generational families to stay, taxing property that's by non-residents. All of the, all of these are good first steps forward. In, in general, in the, in the next three years, that's where our focus has to be. The other candidates have spoken, you know, very cogently about this in terms of we have to do better with what we have. We've wasted too much of the taxpayers' money on unnecessary dream projects. And, and in terms of increasing efficiencies, that would be my stand on, on that particular subject. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Starting with Kalani Kalima, candidacy of one minute to answer Kathy Wyatt's question.
Hi, I'm Kathy Wyatt. I am a board, I mean, a director on Kookoa Council as well as a board member of the Policy Advisory Committee for Elder Affairs. My question to you is, even before the recent riots in America's big cities, locally there was the Kailua incident. How will you restore faith in the city prosecutor's office and the police department? And what are your thoughts on defunding the police?
Mahalo. I believe as Amakua do, so shall their child or their Kiki. If you aren't exemplary behavior, you need to role, you need to role model your expectations for those under your tutelage, care and guidance. We need the leaders to uphold a level of conduct that the ranks can look up to, follow and emulate. The law spread law showcases what we are about, sharing aloha with one another and having empathy for one another. Aloha is cyclic and needs to be reciprocated in order to work. This is based on having a working relationship with your community, building a rapport and having genuine aloha.
Thank you, Kalani. Alan, you're next.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Certainly. Kathy?
Okay, the question is, even before the recent riots in America's big cities, locally there was the Kailua incident. How will you restore faith in the city prosecutor's office and the police department? And what are your thoughts on defunding the police?
I, I don't think we should defund the Honolulu Police Force. I think Honolulu has one of the finest police departments in the nation. Our officers are highly trained, decorated and excessively sought after from other municipalities. However, at the end of the day, prosecutors and law enforcement are public servants and they should be upheld to the same level of public scrutiny as any other individual in public government. One of the key things I really think we need to provide is a safer process for complainants to eliminate the fear of repisal, including an independent and outside body to investigate complaints and take corrective action against HPD and its employees. I think if our, our populace had a safe route to bring up these types of issues, I don't think it would have got to the point where we have Kailua and our prosecutor going out. I just think that process has to be established as soon as possible. And we can also include some additional training for HPD officers, like implicit bias training, bias training, to prevent any of these types of riots from occurring in here, like in the mainland. We've been lucky so far. We have a very good community, food aloha. But I think HPD can always get better through education and additional training. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Esther, you're up. Thank you, Alan. Esther, you're up.
Thank you so much. I agree with Alan that we should not defund the police. I think we're very fortunate to be able to have a police department that is reflective of our community. Should there be need for improvement, absolutely any organization, there is room for improvement. Fortunately, we have the election coming up for city prosecutor. So I hope that people take that to heart when they look for who has the right qualities to be able to move our city forward. Second, Chief Ballard, of course, if elected, I'd work with her and the police department to look at potential police reform, including whether or not the police commission needs to have increased role in its authority and role. And lastly, given our environment and the fact that public health and safety is paramount, I know that there are efforts in the community for the police to strengthen their collaboration with neighborhood watches and community-driven organizations. I respectfully ask that they do it even more so now. It's so important because we need the eyes and ears of the community to be able to kukua our police force. And their number one priority in their strategic plan is to restore trust in HPD. And I think that is one of the most effective ways for HPD to work with the community and to strengthen their hand of safeguarding our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Paul, you're next.
Yeah, thank you. Another good question. Obviously, we can't defund the police force because that's just funding chaos and anarchy. But at the same time, you know, we have to figure out how to help the police force and the community be able to communicate and work together as tightly as possible. Whenever we talk about the police and all the nasty things that went on with people you hardly want to call policemen, I think of the sacrifice that our police have done here in Hawaii recently. Because I feel that they weren't properly informed about what the situation that we're getting into up on Diamond Head. Now, at the same time, we do have a problem with interacting with the police as we've got a commission that awarded a court of a million dollars to somebody who's under indictment. And we have people who are resigning from that commission because, like so many things, when we talk about proper representation, their voice wasn't being heard, their suggestions weren't being taken issue with, they weren't being followed through. So we need to have a commission that is designed as well as possible to give confidence to the community and feedback from the community, but to be also to support the police officers and their safety and their job. And those two things are not mutually exclusive. They have to be able to work together. And we have to find a way to make that work together, which I think, again, like so many of us know how special Hawaii is, I think that's something we could offer both to ourselves and the rest of the country.
Thank you very much, Paul. Warland, you're next.
Thank you for the question. In terms of defunding the police, the word "defund" is probably a horrible application of what the the group is trying to attain in terms of that. The verb they probably should have been using is "rightsizing" in terms of providing funding for the police departments nationwide. Obviously, you know, I've been asked a million times if I was related to the Kailoa's, just, you know, just taking the opportunity to be able to jump in on that. My family's last name is Keikaua. My grandfather was Hanaid and took the first name of his adopted father, which was Kailoa, as his last. So I'm in no way related to any of the Kailoa's. That being said, I still think there's a lot of piling on. And the overarching question on this is, who was in charge of the Kailoa's? And why aren't they being named, you know, in terms of this issue? Right? But that's not what the question was asked, right? In terms of defunding, I saw the showing, you know, on Mauna Kea in terms of the police versus the local protesters. That went worldwide, that went to CNN. That wasn't really a good calling card for our island people in terms of representation and reflecting on us. So, you know, in terms of the defunding, some things need to be looked at, programs need to be moved. And if I recall correctly, Chief Kailoa was getting paid more than the mayor of the city and county of Honolulu. And I'm not quite sure how that should have been also addressed. Anyway, but, you know, that's where I stand on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Warland. Greg, you're next.
Yeah, I would echo the sentiment that's already been said. I would absolutely be opposed to defunding the police. I would also say that I believe Chief Ballard has done an excellent job since she came on board. However, her recent pushback about greater civilian oversight is concerning. Her leadership, I don't question, but she's not always going to be there and things can change over time. We've seen and we should have learned by experience that we need to expand the oversight of the police commission and expand its powers and authority. So I definitely would support that measure in this current situation. In regards to the prosecutor's office, I believe that with a new prosecutor coming in, we will see changes there, but I will be definitely monitoring the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Now, we have the last two questions before we do our wrap-up. This next rotation starts with Alan. You have one minute to answer Rick Tabor's question.
Hi, everybody. So Rick Tabor here. I'm vice president with Kakuua Council and I serve on a lot of different Kapuna things around the state, Hawaii Meals on Wheels and other things as well. I started out here in Hawaii, being stationed at Kehoe back in 1976. I was a Navy hospital corpsman, field med there. And back in the 70s, your area was quite different than it is now. So my question is, with all the trendy businesses and housing, we've kind of answered some of this stuff and development. How do you feel about that? And what are your plans about development in the future? I think we've addressed a little bit of that, but I'll just start with that and we'll start with Alan on that.
Thank you, Rick, for the question and your service. My family, my dad took care of Wheels on Wheels and we really appreciate that. As far as the businesses in Kailua, I think we just need to update our LUO, our Land Use Ordinance. That document is over 30 years old and cannot account for new industries or entrepreneurs. We need to give landowners greater flexibility on how their land can be used through the LUO. I want to create incentives for our permitting agencies to adopt newer technology to help expedite permitting processing and inspections. This would help with new and emerging businesses. We also should we also should be mindful of the community too. As the Kauai Nui project showed us, we should look at community support from the beginning and make sure that new and emerging businesses in Kailua have that support throughout the project. If you look at Wendy's, Wendy's was coming into Kailua, it got a lot of pushback. They're revamping their plans. They didn't give up. They're coming back and trying to accommodate the community. And I think as long as new businesses take that approach, working with the community to make sure it's copacetic with everyone, I think we should always support new industries and new technologies, especially in Kailua. Thank you. On the winward side, on the winward side.
Thank you, Alan. Esther, you're next.
Thank you for that question, Rick. I think you've asked a very difficult question because the answer, of course, is different now, now that we're dealing with COVID-19. The way that we look at the balance of development, for example, in Kailua is going to depend a lot on the resumption of tourism and to what level it will be pre-pandemic. And that's something that all of us here in Hawaii are grappling with to find the right balance because it is impacting a lot of the business community here. But similar to what Alan said with regard to community-driven, just to give you an example of how a lot of the landowners here in Kailua should be looking at is alternative ways besides tourism to garner business. Poli Lanes, for example, is a mainstay for the region and the current Lassies are endeavoring to try to save it. There is a way to ensure that they run it effectively, but also make sure that it is, it delves into the landscape of Kailua as well as be community-driven. So I think landowners need to be able to find that right balance. And lastly, of course, there are so many lands and business in the area to look at sustainable and green industries, not only our farmers, but we have a lot of nurseries in Waimeanalo that need kukua. And alohaaina-based industries that our Hawaiian community are advocating. So I think with regard to economic recovery efforts as a whole, the people of Kailua and the entire region need to make their mana'ona known, not only for our overall thoughts on the resumption of tourism, but how economic development or business development each of our regions have to find the right balance with regard to community input. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Paul?
Sorry, I didn't hear you. Again, Kailua needs more planning. It needs to be able to plan its own future. It needs to be more than just the suburbs of urban Honolulu. The tourism started to pick up, obviously, because the Hawaii Visitor's Furals wanted, you know, whether they helped or not, to push people out of Waikiki. And even you can watch the COVID trail. It went from Waikiki and it went to Kailua because that's now a regular route for tourists. I want people to prosper in Kailua. I think part of the problem is always that you feel you're getting development, but you're not really gaining anything from it. The businesses are doing good, that's great. But what is it doing as far as improving the roads and improving the park structures? You know, we get a plan for Kuaingui Marsh that talks about having places for bus to park and it sounds like tourism and all this sort of tourist-oriented stuff, but we don't even have trails around it. We don't have boardwalks across it. We haven't dealt with the first things which people really want, which is to see the beauty of Kailua in the Windward Side. Instead, we're always trying to develop something to take money off of tourists, which they're coming here to spend their money, but we need to offer them the best possible experience we can, which also gives us fantastic things to do. If we have a trail around Kuaingui that the tourists can go on, that we can also go on. And a mountain-willy regional park that takes up all of the back of Monte Willie and the Monte Willie Trails that we can go on. Or a Haiku Valley Park that tourists can spend maybe $100 to go up the Stairway to Heaven, which some people are going to think that's a deal. So we just need more representation and we need to plan out our future on the Windward Side as residents of the Windward Side. And again, with no disrespect for other people and certainly no disrespect for the Kailua Neighborhood Board that I was on for a season where the problem was, people would come to us with problems and they're important problems. We tried to resolve it and even if we passed a resolution, it didn't mean anything because the city and the state didn't have the authority or desire to do anything. The board had no authority to do anything. And the people there themselves in these communities that want to make a better life, they don't have the ability to do anything. So we can't make Kailua better and Kani Ohi better and Waimeanalo better, but we're going to have to start planning better. We're going to have to have better representation and more representation. And yes, increase revenue and prosperity, but we're going to see, we want to see that stay on the Windward Side and for people to enjoy it and go, hey, this is good.
Thank you very much. Warland, you're next, please.
Thank you. In terms of the Windward Side, right, what is kind of complicated, right, is that we want Waimeanalo to have its own identity, Kailua to have its own identity, Kani Ohi, you know, all of the individual places, right? Without imposing any sort of gentrification over the entire area. Because I think even down the line, it's what the residents wanted, it's why we located where we did. And in order to showcase it to the tourists, we want to be able to control that. Everything, as we discussed with other issues, have always come top-down. It was the rail to run the entire lengths, you know, of the urban core rather than concentrating on the Board of Kailua, the Waimeanalo representation, right? Getting together, potentially meeting within Alexander and Baldwin, right? What's the new vision, right? How do we save Poli Lanes? How do we rethink what's been in place for years? But without destroying, you know, the culture and the aesthetics of our particular community. We have to be able to give them the control. It's exactly as Paul has stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Warland. Greg, you're next.
Rick, thank you for your question. I think while you were stationed at Kehoe, I was busy riding my bike to the old Holiday Mart Theater to catch a doubleheader. So I know what you mean by the changes that have occurred. I guess the first thing I would say is that the future growth for the city and county of Honolulu needs to be in the urban core and along the rail line. That's where we want to see the bulk of housing being developed. That's where we want to concentrate our infrastructure resources. That's where the growth is going to occur. I believe that there's opportunities for the Windward community to contribute more to the need for housing on this island. And I think one area that we can really focus on in our communities is the building of accessory dwelling units. The Real Property Tax Commission has suggested that we actually allow a tax credit for ADU construction. And I believe a program like that would be very important. I was actually instrumental in getting the original waiver of building permit fees and sewer connection fees for ADUs as well. So I'd like to continue that work and I would like to see a lot more ADUs going up in the Windward area to help house residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Excuse me. Kalani, you're next. Kalani, you're next.
Okay, malo. Yeah, with the growth in EVO and the concentration on rail, it saves the Windward Side from the larger boom that's happening in EVO. Yeah, we need a community input to help with the small business model. In Waimeanalo, we have our farmers in egg lots and that is in alignment. What our Kupuna vision was of keeping us a small quiet town. We have the Waimeanalo Co-op trying to focus on providing a venue for community members. Also, we need to strengthen our community's economy by keeping the money in-house. If it's tourism, we should have a community approach towards it. Having the community own small businesses, whether it is restaurants and anything else, that needs to be done in-house. Yeah, we need to malama to keep each of our communities unique. Malo.
Thank you. Excuse me. This last question, this rotation starts with Esther Kiaaina. And you have one minute to answer this question from Marta Schyber.
Hi. For the last 10 years, there has been a Windward Side movement to be a county of itself. What do you feel about this?
Esther?
Hi there. I'll be honest with you. I need more time thinking about this. Paul clearly has articulated throughout this forum of why probably we should be broken apart. My primary concern, quite frankly, is how we deal with the current pandemic collectively for all of Oahu. And so at this point in time, I have concerns about thinking about that without us all being fiscally whole as a state, as a county. And so that's a paramount concern for me right now. So I can't even think about that. I don't have an opinion on whether or not we should be broken off right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Paul, you're up.
Thank you. That's a great, the question of Kohala Poku County. Yeah, I've gone over that. I've gone over with the people who presented that at the Neighborhood Board. It's a little difficult to split the county, it's the county in half. And how do you divide the assets and that kind of stuff? the assets and that kind of stuff. So when I talk about incorporated municipalities, I talk about that. The city and county structure is unique to Hawaii. It was put in place by the guys from the Republic of Hawaii in 1905 on every island. But if you go to the mainland, it's very rarely used. San Francisco is a city and county structure, but the most places are a county structure, which again, the county is a subdivision of the state. And then within that county, there are various incorporated municipalities that, again, the classic definition is they protect their unique individual identities by incorporating. And that corporate charter gives them the ability to collect property taxes and to be able to contract for county services or to do their own police departments or whatever that may be. So the easier route is to potentially try and restructure. Now we're getting, we're going to go afield, but you know, you guys are creative. That's why I enjoy this. If we restructure the county structure, then we can talk about an incorporated Honolulu that could reach out to Kapale or Kapale could be a separate incorporated municipality. What about Haleiwa? See, the thing is, this island is so different. We're not New York. The city of New York, Haleiwa is so different from urban Honolulu. And Kailua is different from Waimeanalo that the point of the incorporated municipality is that it just gives you more local control to deal with local issues. For instance, in Douglas County, Oregon, which is population-wise similar, obviously it's a bigger county, but there's twelve incorporated municipalities, including the county seat of Roseburg, which is 23,000 people, that has an eight-member county council and a mayor, and they're volunteers. But again, you have, you have more representation in Douglas County than we do have, we have here. Because if I was a resident of Roseburg, I'd have eight different county organizations, executives I could vote for, and I could, I could vote for my city council and mayor also. So what I have is greater representation. And it gets back to my question for all of us is, are we working to just represent too many people and too many issues at once? It's, it's, it's a big ball of wax to deal with. But I think if we're creative about where we're going, city council, individually, Windward Side, Honolulu, Oahu and the state, we can, you know, we can look at fundamental issues that don't work
I'm sorry.
and actually redo some restructuring.
Thank you. Worland, you're up.
I'm understanding where Paul's coming from. I don't personally see it happening in the near future. But then again, you know, as he's mentioned, this is, this is quite an undertaking for it to be accomplished. Obviously, I know the California system where you have municipalities, where you have a city council and mayor, where the position of mayor rotates, right? So in terms of representation, the way we're structured, it would, it would allow various districts to have a stronger representation potentially. But in terms of that, at this point, right, and it's obvious that the amount of monies that get spent, get allocated, maybe not in an egalitarian way as they should between the various parts of the island. And that is an antiquated system that has to change at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Worland. Greg, you're up.
I guess I would not rule out the possibility entirely, but I would have very strong reservations about it at any time. Currently, the way that our property tax structure is set up, the residential rates are extremely low, whereas the commercial rates are extremely high. What this essentially is doing is we're subsidizing homeowners' ability to stay in their homes by taxing businesses more. Given that the Windward Community is largely residential, I would see this as being a very challenging undertaking. That being said, you know, I would consider any type of proposal that was put forward, but the economics would have to play out and you could have to be able to do it without impacting residents getting a large property tax increase on their homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Kalani, you're up. Kalani?
Being Waimeanalo, being from Waimeanalo, I am very proud of where I come from, as are many of you folks, you know. But I am proud because of the natural and cultural aspects that make our communities unique. Who try and see from the city-county would be a huge undertaking that I would support. I would support trying to find out what works for the community. As the others have mentioned, because, you know, we have some communities, some au'ou'ua that is pretty much all, and I'm looking all the way to Kua'ua, that is pretty much all residential. I would be a little worried about how they would be equally represented as opposed to someplace that is more urban and developed. Malo.
Thank you very much, Kalani. Alan, you're up.
Aloha. As far as Kailua becoming its own county, I think that would pose significant challenges. First of all, many of our core essential services that the city provides are decentralized. And a majority of our services are essential. We're talking police, emergency, trash, refuge. So if we were to become our own county, Kailua would have to pay for all those types of services or come up with their own forces. If we didn't, we would have to pay the city and county to utilize those. Another component we have to remember is that the population on the Windward Side is significantly lower than other regions. So the property tax base to provide these types of services, our real property tax rates would be significantly higher for our residents because our population is smaller and we still have to provide those types of essential services. So I think that would be a bad idea. A lot of our central, like I said, our services are decentralized. We would have to come up with our own landfill. Right now, some goes to Kailua and Waimeanalo, but a majority of it is shipped off to the other side. We would either have to pay to use that facility or create our own landfill. And we know how we feel about that on the Windward Side. So I'd be against that. I don't, wouldn't support it. I think it's a bad idea. Malo.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you very much, candidates. Each candidate will now provide a closing statement of up to one minute, starting with Paul.
Well, I want to thank the Kukua Council for putting this on. I've really enjoyed it. It's great to be able to see everybody face-to-face and yeah, okay, we're competitors, but we're also neighbors. So I want to stick with the neighbor aspect of it. You know, obviously I want to do things that people haven't thought about before because, you know, that's, that's where I'm coming from is as a builder like Greg. You know, we go up to a structure, we have to determine, okay, do you remodel this structure? Or do you kind of break part of it down and rebuild it? You know, if you've got windows out of alignment, cracks in the foundation and the drywall separating, we know we've got to work on the foundation. We've got to reinforce it. We're going to have to kind of change things around so when we do work on those other things, they stay in place. So my goal as a builder and as somebody who wants to look forward to what more we can do, not just maintain what we've got, but do even better, is to look at what we've got, you know, find out where it's not working and try and come up with solutions to make it better. So that's why my website's called windwardsidefirst.com. Obviously, my name's Paul Mossman. I'd love to be able to represent District Three of the Windward Side. It's a wonderful place to live and it's filled with wonderful people. And I do thank you. I thank all the people with their questions. I thank every other candidate here. It's been a pleasure. Thank you. Malo.
Thank you, Paul. Worland, your closing statement, please.
Hi, thank you. Again, I echo their sentiments. Thank you to Kukua Council. As I had said earlier, it's difficult to campaign in these times. And this is a wonderful venue. Thank you for the questions, the very probing questions, as well as the responses from the other candidates. I would say in terms of my candidacy, I would look at this, I am a voter as well, and I have to look at the platforms of the people that I'm considering voting for. And I would say we have sort of a two-part system in here in terms of we have people who have served within the government versus people who have not held elected office. And somewhere in the middle, you know, is where we're going to be able to provide these solutions, right? I try to bring to the table everything I've learned and understood about how mass transit and rail is done on the mainland. And I've seen it work. Other systems were different from ours in terms of development, TOD, in terms of how it's constructed, all of these various issues. As a city council member, you have to make a decision and it's based on the best knowledge that you have to be able to make the correct decision going forward for the people. And that's where I would base my candidacy in terms of being able to make the correct decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Worland. Greg, your closing statement, please.
COVID-19 and the resulting economic turmoil that will be with us for years to come is the real challenge our city will face in the years ahead. We are in an environment where we must change. Not need to change, not try to change, we must change. The city needs to learn to take care of the things it has before it starts building new things. It needs to do a better job of housing our residents. And we need to streamline government and bring it into the 21st century. All of this is going to require experienced and dedicated leadership. Most importantly, it's going to require leaders that people can trust. My commitment to the people of District Three is that I will do the job with the highest level of integrity. If anyone would like to learn more about my campaign, I invite you to look at my website at www.gthelen.com or visit my Facebook page. With that, I'd like to thank the Kukua Council and Lila for doing a great job moderating. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kalani, you're next.
I just wanted to say mahalo nui, Kukua Council, to everybody involved for having this forum so that we can share some of our mana'au and some of our passions in wanting to serve the District Three constituents. It's been a learning curve for me. I'll say that, that there's so much to, not just becoming a city councilman, but moving away from community advocacy and service. But I believe the other part to that learning is to have a solid foundation of showing our experiences, what we've done for the community so that they can actually see what we've done, what we've given, our time, our effort and our heart, not wait until it's election time for us to showcase some of the good that we believe we can do. And the people of District Three needs to look at everybody's, everybody's record and make the best decision possible. Mahalo nui for this opportunity. Aloha. Au'ou.
Thank you, Kalani. Alan, your closing statement, please.
I'd just like to thank the Kukua Council, the other candidates, everybody watching and all the questions. We really appreciate the opportunity. COVID really has changed campaigning for us. I mentioned earlier that I'm running for office because I've had a lifelong desire to help and improve our community. I realized early on the importance of political participation and representation and dedicated my education and volunteer time to public service. As a public servant, your everyday job is to help your community address issues and set policy for the generations to come. I do not see this as a job, but this is an opportunity for me to live my dreams and help give back to the community that raised me. I can promise two things. That always happens at our city council office now. My door is always open. We listen and help everyone that contacts our office. We do not operate at a vacuum in the council. We need to hear from constituents, the community, private sector on what's working and what doesn't work so we can make the appropriate changes. Call us, text us, let us know whatever needs to, whatever needs to be done, but we're here to help you. And please remember that this election, we have five new council members coming in so we can change the direction of the city for years to come. Please vote. Remember, it's mail-in and I hope you can support me as a Council Three council member. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Esther, your closing statement, please.
Thank you to the Kukua Council and to all of my colleagues here. I actually learned a lot today. So I think the voters are going to have a very difficult time. Just as a recap, I believe that my cumulative working experience and determination would serve me well representing the Windward Region on the city council. My strength is navigating governmental systems to make them more efficient and to move things forward. I am known to be an effective advocate at all levels, including within communities, working with communities to have their voices heard. If at the end of the day, while I respectfully ask that you consider me as your city council, your next city council person, you have a lot of great candidates today. So at the end of the day, if you still can't decide, vote Wahine. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Esther. Candidates and friends, thank you very much for being with us today. I certainly learned a lot.